Okay, all right. The first thing on the agenda, because at six o'clock we have another, the manager's gonna try to make his budget presentation. I understand he's having a sort of a quick technology glitch upstairs. Some markets has run upstairs. So, we can do the Harris Teeter presentation?
Yeah.
And I think we're pretty good on all that, so, okay.
Okay.
Frank?
You do have a joint public hearing with the Planning Commission on some applications associated with the proposed Harris Teeter. And what you'll have on your agenda are actually two separate applications. One from suburban properties, which would include a plan amendment, a rezoning, and two special exceptions for commercial drive-throughs. And then from Harris Teeter itself, you've got an application for two special exceptions. One for the ability to operate after midnight, which we refer to as a special exception for 24-hour sales, and the other one for ABC off-premise sales. Just to orient you as to what we're talking about, it's a little over eight-acre site that is currently developed as a shopping center without parcels, and then it also includes, the area that we're talking about includes two vacant residential lots, which are back in the southeast corner of the overall development. It is within the suburban acres and wards corner civic leagues. And again, you have two separate applications with six total ordinances that you'll be voting on. And just to try to go through them separately, so you'll see all the pieces, the first one is a plan amendment, and this is from HRE Realty. And all it is really looking at is, is three parcels, and I know it's confusing, because I said there are only two vacant residential parcels, but the plan amendment covers three. That's because one of the parcels that is covered by the plan amendment currently is zoned commercial. But all you're looking at in this particular, with the plan amendment, are these three parcels in this quarter that are currently designated as low-density residential. They were proposed changes to commercial office. It is proposed as commercial office in the draft Plan Norfolk 2030, the draft general plan from the Planning Commission, which we felt was a basis for moving forward with this particular plan amendment. We do need to acknowledge that the request is not consistent with the greater wards corner comprehensive plan. That plan calls for a very urban development plan at this particular site, which would say that the buildings all go to the street, they need to be multi-story buildings with residential above-ground-floor retail and structure and parking. And I will tell you, as a planner, I think that plan is in error with regard to this particular designation. I think this development pattern is too urban for this part of the city. I think a more suburban proposal would be appropriate. And for that reason, I am very comfortable with recommending to you the rezoning for HRE Realty. And what this is doing is changing the overall zoning designation of the property. Right now, you have it as C2, which is the bulk of the property. A small area of conditional C3, or actually, the bulk of it is C3, a smaller area of C2, and the R2 of the residential over the two blocks. The entire property would go to conditional C3. Under the proposal, the conditions are tied back to the elevations that are included in your packet and to the site plan. So this is the elevation that is committed as part of the rezoning, and this is the site plan. The site plan does reflect, as I indicated earlier, a more suburban setting than the wards corner comprehensive plan called for. I personally think this is a much more appropriate pattern for the use, as did Mr. Gendros, when Mr. Gendros looked at this area, that the wards corner plan was too urban for this area. This plan does reflect two commercial drive-throughs, one on an out parcel here that is proposed as a bank, and a smaller one back at the back that is proposed for a fast food, or for a, proposed for a coffee house, but the way we deal with it in the ordinance is as a fast-food drive-through. Both of the drive-throughs have proposed to meet all of the city's ordinance requirements. They have the separation, the stacking, the landscaping, so there are no issues with either of the drive-throughs.
Is it a single lane or one lane?
The one for the restaurant, the food establishment, is a single lane, which is very typical for a coffee shop, coffee house. The one for the bank is four lanes.
Frank, just to be sure, you said fast food first, but I know Chris is here, but we're talking like a Starbucks coffee house.
I know that's what their proposal is, but we don't have a separate way to distinguish that as it relates to the zoning ordinance, so that's why we would refer to this similar to what a fast food. What they're proposing is a coffee house, you're correct.
And I see there's a four-lane...
Yes, this is at the out parcel, in this area.
Is that, are they down, and I know Chris is here, are they down the road enough, Frank, that they know that four lane is what's being asked?
It's consistent with what they've asked for. I'm assuming that they have met with potential tenants, but that's a question that you'd have to ask Mr. Perry.
Just, do you have a recommendation of that?
I do. Both of these drive-throughs fully comply with ordinance requirements, so our recommendation is approval.
Okay.
Look, for both of these.
I hear that. Every bank, and I'm involved with them, will ask for four lanes, and usually, they don't need four lanes. And I know this isn't a pedestrian over lane district, but I, what's, I mean, what's wrong with three lanes as opposed to four? I mean...
At this point, what my concern is, if you're going to try to move the cars through as efficiently as possible, you want to have the fewest number of cars actually stacking up. And from an air quality standpoint, I think this may be preferable.
And one of those lanes might be an ATM.
I don't want to upset anybody's card right now, but I, as, you know, as the developer goes down the road, I would, you know, even, he may be permitted to, I would ask him to pay attention to what makes good sense for everybody, I mean, even the dynamics of what's going on within his own parking lot there. For us, a lot of people to be coming out, and cars turning two or three different ways at once, that's...
We hope so.
Yeah, I mean, but I, you know, you've seen it in action, you know how that goes.
Actually, with the special exceptions, it would have a number of lanes, drive-through lanes for this particular use at four. So we could do less than that if the tenant came in and said, "I don't need them," so long as they still met all the stacking requirements. Then I do need to acknowledge that with regard to these applications, we received a letter from the suburban acre civic league, which expressed qualified support for the rezoning. The issue that they raised was looking at the architecture of the building. They wanted something that looked more like Granby High School. They asked for a brick wall or ornamental fence separating the parking from the streets, a berm between the stormwater facility and the streets at the rear of the site, an improved rear facade facing Virginia, and that native plants be used to landscape. They did indicate they supported both of the special exceptions for it. It's the only issues they had. And they indicated it's qualified support, it's not opposition, is they're looking for some modifications to the design elements that are shown in this application. And then we also received the same kind of a letter from the wards corner civic league, which expressed concern about the suburban nature of the development, but they indicated their real issues were looking for some changes to the overall architecture to more mimic Granby High School, and that the landscape materials be selected by the city arborist for ease of maintenance. And they also indicated support for both of these special exceptions. Then I didn't do separate slides on the 24-hour sales or the ABC off-premise, I just put all the applications here for one, because I really don't have anything I can tell you about those, except they meet all ordinance requirements. So, the staff recommendation on each of these, all six of these ordinances, is approval. What we're looking at for the plan amendment, we think that's consistent with what the Planning Commission has already recommended for this area in the upcoming general plan. The rezoning, because we think that the greater wards corner plan calls for an overly urban design here, and we think that what is being proposed is more appropriate for the area, so we recommend approval of the rezoning. For the drive, both of the commercial drive-throughs, we're recommending approval, they meet all ordinance requirements, so we have no issues with either of those. And then likewise, for the 24-hour sales request, which is coming from Harris Teeter, and for the ABC off-premise request from Harris Teeter, we're recommending approval, because they all sort of fully comply with all ordinance requirements.
Frank, everybody understands we're having a joint meeting with the Planning Commission, and they will vote for what we vote. Have they been given the same briefing?
They have been briefed on this, we have given them their report. The only thing that they did not get were the, in their briefing, were the concerns raised by the two civic leagues. We have provided copies of both of those letters to them electronically, and that's simply because we didn't get those letters until after. While that had gone out, then I have discussed those issues in terms of Mr. Perry.
All right. Let me ask you that. When we call for the, for the action to be considered, was Frank gonna make a presentation there with the public, or are we just, I mean, have you given any thought to that?
Well, he could be, I think that would make sense near.
I mean, I don't know if he's got a teed up to do something like that. I mean, this took three or four minutes. I mean, you could do that out, you know, upstairs, it would make some sense if that were the public, anything, so...
Be more than happy to do that.
Frank, just real quick, the 24-hour sales special exception, what would, what type of business would that apply to?
This would apply to the grocery store, because it is being asked for by Harris Teeter. It does not address alcohol sales. Alcohol sales are not regulated in the particular hours that the 24-hour sales special exception authorizes, because Virginia ABC laws don't allow the alcohol sales during...
So there, and the ABC off-premise sales, again, that's particularized for Harris Teeter?
Yes, it is very, it is the exact same special exception that was applied for the Harris Teeter in Ghent. So it does allow single sales of the specialty beers that are only available in sizes greater than 12 but less than 34 ounces. So you're primarily dealing with European-style beers that only come in very odd, larger sizes. And that's the only, only special exceptions you have allowed for single sales in the five years I've been with the city. You've approved that kind of a special exception twice.
Well, the 24-hour sales special exception only goes to Harris Teeter, doesn't go to the remainder of the shopping center.
That's correct. That's why these two particular items are, they are from a Harris Teeter application as opposed to the HRE Realty application, which covers these four ordinances.
Any other questions?
It does run with the land for the 24-hour sales.
Right.
Frank, what I'm saying is that we're gonna have five other stores that are gonna come in and have 24-hour sales, so that's what I'm asking. So, I know that I'm dealing with Harris Teeter, and I'm dealing with five other stores plus Harris Teeter in the same shopping center.
Right, and if Harris Teeter were to sell to, they would have...
That's fine, I get that.
Is somebody else...
It would apply to the large anchor store.
Right.
That's the anchor store.
Well, it is Harris Teeter for this, yes.
I see Mr. Perry here. In the likely event that all this goes forward tonight, when are you prepared to break ground, Chris?
We would hope to break ground this summer.
And maybe we could have a ceremonial groundbreaking here.
I'm sorry?
Maybe we could have a ceremonial groundbreaking here.
Great, you all are kind. Hop on the tractor.
Okay, any other questions about this? We've got a few minutes, and maybe Tommy will join us by the time we get to the coal-fired plant, but are there any council interests or concerns we want to talk to the manager about quickly? We're scheduled at six o'clock to go upstairs, and the manager's gonna make his budget presentation, so, Andy, do you have anything for the manager?
I'm fine, Paul.
Okay. Mr. Riddick?
Yeah, I do. A couple of weeks ago, we had an incident with the police department, and a fellow who was pepper sprayed and on his way to the hospital, he died. I guess my major concern is the fact that I have been asking that we have officers trained to detect and deal with people with post-traumatic stress disorder. Now, this incident happened over very closely to Navy Housing, almost even at the military installation. And I believe strongly that if our officers were trained to recognize post-traumatic stress disorder, then this incident might not have happened. And I've been talking at this table about that for quite some time. Under our last police chief, we were supposed to have been applying for a grant to train for post-traumatic stress disorder. With that grant not being in place, the Community Services Board and other institutions in mental health were supposed to, you know, be able to assist our police officers. And this is not the first time that I believe that post-traumatic stress disorder was paramount in an incident. There was a young woman who died at the hands of police last year, year and a half ago. And post-traumatic stress disorder, and this was, you know, at a Navy housing complex, post-traumatic stress disorder does not just affect the listed person or the retired, you know, individual. It also has an effect on spouses as well as children. And then about four years ago, in Navy Housing, another military person had an incident with the police, and he ended up, you know, being shot. And I just really believe that with the military presence we have here, with the propensity for post-traumatic stress disorder, that we need to have our officers apply for a grant, which our grants are available, and we need to be able to detect individuals who might have post-traumatic stress disorder, or some type of mental disorder associated with the military, and then mental disorders, period. And I really believe that we would be well-served if we did have somebody in that position. Now, when this first, when I first brought this to the attention to this body about three years ago, out of the seven cities, Norfolk was the only city who had not applied for this grant. And at that time, Chief Marquis said that, you know, he was going to apply for it, and we were gonna, you know, be a part of it. But we really have to be sensitive to the fact that we have people who have mental disorders because of the military serving in war zones and things like that. And so, I just wish that we would apply, you know, and have our officers trained, and maybe not to react so, so quickly. My other thought is the fact that this man was put in a police cruiser, handcuffed, with the ambulance following him. It seemed to me that he could have been put in the ambulance with restraints with a police officer in the ambulance, and then they wouldn't have had to pull over to the side to try to administer to this guy. And so sometimes, you know, we just need to, I think, think a little bit and not react so much, you know, as, you know, the heavy-handed, you know, police officer. The other, the other incident that occurred that I'm always talking about, high-speed chases. And I started, I started talking about high-speed chases back in 1993, when two young white teenage girls, 15 and 14-years-old, were driving a car without any permission to drive the car. They were being chased by one of our police officers as they made the turn around by a tight water drive over by the old, where the oil company is, and as it occurred, these two girls died as a result of a high-speed chase. Nobody was in jeopardy of being hurt. They were not leaving the scene of a crime, they were not going somewhere to commit a crime. And the other day, we had an incident where a driver was supposedly driving erratically, and we had a high-speed chase. We were supposed to have stopped high-speed chases. Since I've, since I've been talking about high-speed chases in the 90s, we've had at least seven innocent citizens killed because of high-speed chases. Vietnam veterans killed because of high-speed chases. One lady was coming from the airport one morning, one-thirty in the morning, going home to her family, killed by a high-speed chase. We, we need to get this under control. And I don't know where we are in terms of looking for a police chief, but if our acting chief can't get this stuff under control, then we, we need to do something a lot quicker. You know, these high-speed chases, you know, anybody could, you know, a citizen could be killed, a tourist could be killed, anybody. Now, if there's somebody who's committed a crime, or going somewhere, if you believe they're going to harm somebody, that's one thing. And we're supposed to have something in place in terms of how we can pass off, as opposed to high-speed chases. So these are two things, post-traumatic stress disorder, recognizing individuals with post-traumatic stress disorder, having our officers trained to recognize, or people responding for that in high-speed chases.
Okay, maybe it'd be good to get a repressure, because I know our policy, Paul, has evolved over time, to passing off, like you said, to more senior advisors, who we've called off in a number of high-speed chases in the city now. And we, we're actually calling them off. A few of them, in fact, I think they were actually backing down at this one, at this accident, but maybe we can get the policy in here, take a look at it again. Okay? Mr. Wynn?
I have another question.
Okay, Dr. Whibley?
Yeah, I just have two quick things. One, I did attend the forum last Wednesday about the placement, no, Thursday, right? Thursday, about the placement of our transfer station. And I think many of you may have read in the paper that there was not much enthusiasm for the proposed site. I really hope we're not gonna rush into this and look at some of the other options, of which I think there are some viable ones. I really feel that this is our chance to do transportation right, and it should be connected. And I appreciate all the work that everybody did at that presentation. I know that there was a lot of work done to look at the various sites, but I don't think we're there yet. And I'm hoping that this council will take some time to perhaps consider, in a work session or something that would be, I know we're getting laid in with this stuff, but this is important for us to get it right. And I think the consensus of the group was that we don't have it. Secondly, Bernard, I'd like to ask you to take a look at the way we write proposals for our zoning requests and our special exceptions. An example came up in our neighborhood where there was a proposal for a change of a convenience store, and the entire neighborhood was confused by this proposal, what it meant, including one of my neighbors who's an attorney. I've gotta believe we can write this a little more succinctly, so that it clearly delineates exactly what is being asked. I know that...
Are we talking about the unnoticed as well?
No, I mean, well, I mean, these neighbors that approached me had looked up online what it was, and specifically what this was. This is a proposal to, to take this convenience store to 24 hours. And the entire group that read this interpreted it as alcohol for 24 hours, because it talks about, you know, an establishment that also sells alcohol. So they took that to mean that, many of them, that that also included 24 hours. I mean, really, we've all been to school, but look at this stuff, it's confusing. And I just feel like we could simplify it a little bit and make it a little more citizen-friendly. I mean, is anybody else, am I the only dummy that doesn't understand these all the time?
No, I mean, some of them are kind of complicated, and I have to call and ask, what does this mean, or can you help me with that?
I mean, I promise you, an attorney friend of mine called and said, "Oh, no, look at this, this means 24 hours." He didn't get it either.
If they could buy a six-pack at four o'clock in the morning.
Yeah, yeah. So, I just am curious if maybe we could take a stand to make these...
Certainly.
You know, maybe at the sixth grade level or the fourth grade level? What would attorney be, would that be sixth grade or a third grade? A doctor would be second grade.
I'd agree with that.
Yep. Anyway, that's all.
But remember, we make our money by this crazy...
Yeah, well, that's true. Charge by the hour then.
Mr. Vice Mayor?
Just a few things. I would, I would say that, you know, it's interesting, we have this dialogue about the transfer station. I minded that the transfer station was on Shala Street for many, many, many years before we built the Will Fargo Center, and we had not one problem. And so I think the positioning of it, based on where you put it, would yield the types of results that we were hoping, in essence, to have all of our citizens to, whether they choose to, or whether they, it's their only mode of transportation that they would consider using our buses. And so I just think where we have it now is just, it's not the right area, and it attracts more than just people riding the bus. So, you know, all don't, there, there is no perfect location for it. But I do not think that folks should have to continue to be subjected to those types of, the element itself, as well as the things that are, that are happening in and around the transfer station. So, you know, if people are gonna have opposition to what we come up with, because we've been talking about this for the last four years, at least put suggestions or, or solutions on the table, you know, as it relates to this, because I do know that Frank Dukie, those guys, and Mr., the city manager, have been working hard to try to accommodate the citizens of the city. And at the end of the day, I think that it mostly affected people who ride it. And I hear it every day about how deplorable it is over there, and how folk have looked at other modes of transportation, because they don't feel safe nor comfortable over there. So I just hope that while we're having these discussions about what, what's not good, that we can also have discussions about solutions, and that the administration makes a decision based on egress-ingress in terms of whether or not it will negatively impact traffic patterns or getting buses in and out, you have to respect that. That's my two cents as it relates to that. But I would say, Mr. Manager, continue to move forward on that, because we've been trying to work on this for quite some time. The other thing is, I brought up to this body before, I talked about a small business task force. One of the things that, you know, I know we, one of the things that I see that, that's happening in this city that could help our small businesses a great deal is that we do a lot of, the city itself is an economic engine, and it spurs, it has a net, it has a positive economic impact to the local economy. We have a lot of small businesses to pay into our formula in terms of taxes. I think that as we deal with these small businesses, create this task force, I think one of the things that we should be mindful of, and that we should do, and I think that we can accomplish this with the proper language, that if we have vendors who receive grants directly from the city, I think that we need to have a point system that reward those who do business with those small businesses within the city of Norfolk. I think it's a slap in the face to have small businesses that want to be in the city of Norfolk, that pay taxes to the city of Norfolk, and we have vendors that we, again, give grants to, and they turn around and take those city dollars and support businesses in Chesapeake, Newport News, and so on and so forth. So I do think that we should have a point system rewarding those entities who we do give grants to, who will def, who directly turn around and do business with small businesses in this city that, that generate a positive income to the city of Norfolk. That does a couple of things. You know, again, that helps these small businesses grow, and that means more taxes to the city. So I would, I would hope that we can work on that and, and create a formula that, that's conducive to making the, starting a business in the city of Norfolk valuable. The other thing that, last thing I will say, and I'll keep saying this week in and week out, there's a direct correlation between gangs, guns, and money. And if you, and if you don't realize, if, you know, you, you got gangs in this city, they form to, again, to protect each other, as well as to, to, to basically profit from the drug trade on the streets of this city as well as any other city. And then they have to protect themselves, so then that's when the guns come in, okay? And so, just this past weekend, the security guards over in Mission College, a young man was running, the security guards were at him. I got a picture of the gun that they took off, where the young man dropped. And so it just shows you what... And so it just shows you what we're having to, what our officers are having to deal with on the streets. Now, I do know that we're down on our, within our gang unit, they said that they were going to replace the, the numbers. They're down to five now. But I would say that to the administration, that there's a direct correlation that's tied to, you know, each one of those bullets that I just named, guns, drugs, and money. And that's a, that's, that's a big part of the problem that we're having in our streets. Now, I would just hope as the summer, as the days get longer and, you know, the work that they've been able to do, the number of arrests that they've been able to make, the drugs that they've been able to take off the streets, and the weapons that they've been taken, been able to take out off the street. And if you haven't seen that data or looked at some of the weaponry that these guys have been successful in doing so, then I would, I would advise you to do that. But I would say that, I would ask, respectfully ask, that we restore that unit so these guys can do the work that they've been doing. They've been quiet in terms of doing the work, but I can, I can attest to some of the, the drugs that they've taken off the streets in the Norview area, the Alexandria Streets area, and some other communities, as well as the money that they've been able to confiscate. Again, so I, I just wanted to say that because I don't want our numbers to, to continue to climb in the summer months. I do want to see them decline, but we have to have a strategic plan in order for that to happen.
That's all I have, Mr. Frank. Angela?
Couple of things. Something actually new on my list, but Councilman Riddick hit on it when he talked about post-traumatic stress syndrome. And I know we have a new person that we've hired, you know, dealing with military affairs. That might be something in terms of locating grants or finding grants or identifying various training opportunities for our police and, and all of our employees, really, because the military, they do business with the city. And so everybody comes into contact with military individuals, and you just never know what may provoke or set someone off who's dealing with post-traumatic stress syndrome that, you know, they, they don't know. So maybe that can be, you know, something that you work on. The second thing is regarding that position, are we going to get a, or did I miss it? Are we going to get a job description or benchmarks of what, did I miss that?
We hit the description. We can give you an update.
Do you get that back to me?
Sure.
Okay, all right. That'd be great, because I, there's like so much paper here. The last two things. It's come to my attention, and I thought they were online, the minutes from this meeting that's taken by the stenographer are not online. Are minutes from the meeting not...
I don't think we've ever required that. It takes some, in fact, she doesn't type them until, unless there's a request.
Well, we may be talking a little bit about semantics that we prepare minutes and approve them, but we don't do verbatim so that what you just said, what I'm saying now, is not going to appear in the minutes that you approve. And I believe that the minutes summarizing the meeting, the topics, the actions are online, but we just don't do a verbatim and put it online.
Unless it's, unless someone requests it. Is that what you're saying? If some of them requested a verbatim from the stenographer, then they would be able to get it, but it's not.
Yes. We've never published a verbatim as a matter of routine, as a matter of course.
Okay. All right. And then the last thing is the bus transfer station. You know, I love the design. I love that it is user-friendly. I love that it is informative. I think that it respects the users of public transportation greatly. I do have concerns about the location, and I think that downtown, I think that's a quick fix. And I really believe that we need to look at what we're trying to do at that location and what we're going to be able to do, given the noise and the smog and all those kinds of factors, putting the bus transfer station in the, it's downtown Plaza to me, because that's the way it was. I grew up with it being downtown Plaza. So, in downtown Plaza. So I really think we need to just look at, we do need to move forward with it, and we need to, we definitely need to do something to make sure that the public, the users of public transportation have a good facility, but I think we can do better on the location. I really do. And that's all I have.
Okay. Right on time, Mr. Speaker. Tommy, how was the traffic?
Actually, no traffic at the Hanter Rose Bridge, so right through.
See, I told you we didn't have fixing.
I mean, the last thing here is the coal-fired plant. We've only got a moment. Do you have any issue or concern you want to bring up that we just went around the town?
Let me see. Where do I start?
Anthony took your time, Tom.
I'm sure he did.
The, the R8 agenda item is about the resolutions regarding proposed Old Dominion Electric Cooperative Cypress Creek Coal Fired Power Plant without a presentation, without debating it again in the room, because we've all been pulled in a lot of directions on this. What I would propose as a process for coming to terms with this is, of course, anybody who's here today can speak, and they can, will hear from everybody. And then the first thing that we will vote on is a resolution that says that due to concerns relating to the environment and public health, the city of Norfolk is opposed to the proposed Old Dominion Electric Cooperative. That is the one that I think Terry and Tommy originally requested. And so if that gets five votes, then the matter is solved. In the event that it doesn't get five votes, and we still have to hear from the public, there is other language, and, and you've read it, and it says, due to significant concerns, et cetera, et cetera. There are four. I have a little different language, which I'd like to read to see if it works for anybody. And it's, it is section one, that the city of Norfolk is provisionally opposed to the Old Dominion Electric Cooperative Plant provided, after the appropriate federal and state agencies have compiled the record regarding the effect of the plant, city council will again review the public record and act accordingly. Section two, that the city of Norfolk hereby requests that the Hanter Rose Planning District Commission provide relevant air quality analysis due to concerns expressed by Norfolk citizens related to the environment and public health. And three, that the city manager is hereby directed to accomplish relevant, say, drinking water analysis, et cetera, et cetera. It's the same things that he had in these, in his sections here. The only different language is the section one that says, in fact, it says we're provisionally opposed instead of opposed. And I don't know that we'll ever get there. I don't know if it's going to make anybody feeling better, but at least that is a fallback in the event that there aren't five votes.
I guess it's no need to ask this question there, because it's, but, you know, how do we get here, and what businesses it involves? I mean, why do we even have to have a resolution? And I'm not, you know, asked to want to answer anything like that, but that's, that's my position.
Okay. So Bernard, do you need anything other than that? I mean, that's a, that's, that's resolution two.
You're replacing the second one without...
Yes. Then we may never get to that. Mike? Hope we do, actually. Okay. Then we are at the 6 o'clock hour, and we will go upstairs, and the manager will present his budget.[1754.54]